Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative of the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, the committee will hear Bill Number 21-0113. In attendance, we have members of the committee, John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Oded Ramos of the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. And also staff to this committee, Jennifer Coats from Council Services. And for some reason, I always seem to forget Jennifer, and she is an important part of helping to move everything forward with structure and just organization, and wouldn't know what to do without her. So, thank you again for Jennifer, for all the good work you continue to do. And also, member of the committee, Mark Conway of the Fourth District, has joined us. And from the Council President's office, we have Lucy Font, Staff Assistant for Legislative Affairs. And also from the Office of the Mayor, we do have Nina Themulus, Deputy Director of Government Relations, that just stepped away for a few minutes, but she'll be right back. And we have, also have Sophia from her office as well. So, let's begin. Bill Number 21-0113, zoning code modifications for the purpose of making needed changes to certain provisions that during the course of actively operating under the new zoning code were discovered to be functionally impractical or otherwise in need of modification to abate previously unanticipated consequences and generally relating to the zoning and land use laws of the city of Baltimore. The bill is sponsored by Council President for the administration, specifically the Department of Planning. This bill was introduced on August 16, 2021. A public hearing was held on March 1, 2021, and that hearing was recessed. A work session was held on May 10, 2022, and that work session was recessed. And as a reminder, public testimony was taken at the public hearing. And we're now, the committee will now resume in our discussions. Today, we will resume beginning with Title 14, and we'll try to complete discussions up to Title 18. So, we're going to get, we'll begin with Title 10, sorry. And we'll try to complete discussions. Hold on, let's get this title right. 10, okay. So, we're going to start with Title 10, resume with Title 10, and we'll try to complete discussions up to Title 18. So, we're going to try to get most of the titles done today. And we also, at the last discussion meeting, we did ask Jeffrey Veal to join us, and he has joined us today. So, we'll be hearing from him shortly. So, Tamara Woods with the Planning Department is leading in on this bill in the Planning Department. Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. So, before you begin, so we don't kind of go back and forth, and we do have Jeffrey Veal here with BMZA. So, we're going to go back, I think, to Title 5. And thank you for your taking time out of your busy schedule, Mr. Veal. I know you have a lot of work that you, decisions that you make. And as I said at the last discussion meeting, we really just wanted you to come. We are here to, you know, protect your position and the good work that you, the part that you play in the structure. And as a council, we want to just make sure that some of the changes are support you, support, and so on. So, we, as a committee, would like to hear from you.
Can I talk about you?
Yes.
First off, again, thank you for the invitation. I probably should have been here a whole lot sooner, but that might also be a reflection of the confidence that I have in the folks that are representing not only my shop, but Department Housing, Community Development with regards to our processes related to zoning. Also, my colleagues over in the Planning Department, who I work considerably well with. I know it's been some distance between us based on COVID, but thankful to be here, thankful to see them, and thankful to be here with all of you as well. Most of the things that are being discussed and being looked at with regards to the zoning code, I'm very much supportive of. I will say this with regards to the BMZA and their role with regards to what's being proposed here. We do get an awful lot of requests for BMZA applications. And a BMZA application is usually threefold. It's either an application that gets denied because it's conditional use. You've got to go to the zoning board because that's where conditional uses go. Or you need some type of a variance because you're building something and it doesn't comply with the bulk regulations of the code. Or it's some sort of nonconforming issue, and we need to decide whether or not that nonconformity can be continued or changed or modified in some way, shape, or form. But there are many folks, over the years, who could be, for the most part, could be attorneys or developers or people who already know that if they put in an application for a permit to do something, that we're going to deny it based on one of those reasons or more. And they already know they've got to go to the zoning board. So, instead of them going through the permitting process and filing an application that they know is going to be denied, and now they've got to be told they've got to go to the board, and more paperwork, and shuffling of paper and all that, I think that what this amendment does is it allows that applicant to go straight to the BMZA. Same application process, same type of forms will be submitted and reviewed, completeness requirements would still be there. And we would still reserve the right, obviously, to review applications that would come directly to our office. But I think the purpose here, and I guess Katie will speak to this as well, is the fact that if someone knows they have to go to the zoning board rather than going straight to us, they would just process that application straight through to the BMZA. We'd obviously would know about it because a process internally would have to be created wherein an application gets submitted and electronically, we would see it just as well as they would. That's an IT issue, and that's something that we're working on. But I think once we get to a process where we'll have the funding necessary and the tools needed to have an online system where folks are just applying for permits and appeals and everything else online, I think that's going to resolve that issue of transference because everything's going to sort of go through the same pipeline. And if it's directly to the BMZA, there'll be a process for that. If it's through the pipeline where they get a permit regularly through us, it would just go through the normal processes that we're undertaking right now. But on its face, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Of course, if someone did not know that they need to go to the board, just like many folks who apply for permits every day, our shop is still there to tell them and advise them and leave it up to them to file the appeal. But I think what this bill gets at is addressing those individuals who already know that they're going to get a denied application from me, and they're going through the appeal process directly as opposed to going through our shop.
Any questions from the committee to Mr. Veal? Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I understand that this would help to sort of streamline your operations, right? So, you're not getting the denials, the people who already know that they're going to get denied would automatically go to the board. Do we think that this is going to increase the workload for the board? Because that was another concern from last, last time that we met. And maybe this is more of a question for the Director.
Could be.
Not significantly. I think what we're trying to do is avoid duplication. Because right now, what the process is, someone comes in and applies for a conditional use. They get, they have to submit a permit application, right? And they get denied. Then they have to submit a BMZA application. So, they submit the BMZA application and the permit application to Mr. Veal's shop. A paper file is created. A paper file is then given to us. Then we, you know, if they've scanned what they've scanned, we scan what we scan. So, it's essentially, we're trying to avoid the duplication. So, we're doing the exact same thing that Mr. Veal's shop is doing. So, he gets the application, reviews it, identifies what the issues are, puts in the system, you know, these are the issues that are presented. We get it, we review it, make sure that we're all identifying the same issues. If his shop has already scanned it, great. If not, then we go ahead and scan it. So, we're, we're trying to avoid the duplication that exists. And in the original code, Mr. Veal's office is the gatekeeper. And I think Stephanie might know, I think DHCD handles 40,000 permits a year.
Yeah, I saw that in the budget earlier, yeah.
He, his shop touches every single one, like every single permit. It goes through zoning first. So, if you already know, and the code already says you have to go to the board, then go to the board. So, the board's already doing the work. We're just trying to eliminate that step. So, there's no delay necessarily, no additional delay necessarily for the applicant. And there is a little more work for us, but, but it's basically going to be, hopefully, electronic. And then this is something that if we can go for a BMZA, all online application, then the applicant uploads the, and this is what we're, everything is working towards with DHCD. And BMZA will have their little offshoot of that. So, the applicant goes online, they scan, they upload, they pay, it's done. So, right now, until we get to that, so instead of going to Mr. Veal's shop, you would take your paper application, we would process it, scan it, and save it. So, we're essentially, you're just going to do it in a different location, and we're already doing the same work anyway. So, it's, it's easier on the applicant and less duplicative internally.
Right. Thank you for that.
So, I'd like to, you're welcome. BMZA usually defers to planning. In fact, they did it on this bill. Doesn't that put the planning, planning in a more authoritative role?
No. So, I think we're, it might be apples and oranges. So, the BMZA has taken a position that when the board sits as an administrative body on zoning, so when someone comes to rezone a particular property, what you'll see are letters from the BMZA, and the BMZA voted on this. The board members said that if the council is going to sit as a zoning authority, we're going to defer to planning's recommendation. Because the board has made a determination that when you act like the BMZA as an administrative body, it would be like one judge telling another judge what to do. So, they've made a determination that we're not going to make recommendations. We're going to defer to planning. Because the Planning Commission is the body that does get into the weeds, makes recommendations. They make recommendations to the board on matters that come before it. They make recommendations to the council on matters that come before it. On this one, the, I myself, on behalf of the board, I know Derek, before he left for BMZA, worked really closely with planning on these particular amendments. So, we didn't get into the weeds on that because we, on this bill in particular, because we had already spent time with planning making those changes that were important to the board. The board's not going to weigh in on how high a building should be. The board's not going to weigh in on variance, you know, you know what I mean? They're, they're not going to do that because their role is to apply the law, right, as it comes in. Now, things that impact the board, like Title 5, we 100% were involved in that. But as far as use standards, as far as height and conditions and bulk, what's conditional, what's not, the board's not going to weigh in on that because that's not its role. Does that make sense?
Some, somewhat. I, I think when we see the, the writing on, when the information comes and it says you're, you know, you're deferring to planning or another agency, we as a council don't get any information, really, the, the way that we should to understand what you, the process you had just mentioned. So, we have a certain role. So, it's making me wonder if even the language should be changed some kind of way. We, we're trying to get information as well and not really understand, getting it. We just don't want it to be just pushing papers through.
Understand.
The next level.
Hundred percent. And there, it's state law requires the BMZA comment to the council when the council acts as an administrative body. So, it's, it's a conversation that I'm having with the mayor's office to change that state law so we can then change city law. Because when the board acts as an administrative body, your function is exactly what the board does. So, when you work as a quasi judicial body, which you do when you guys make certain decisions on zoning, because it says conditional use.
Correct.
Council approval, right? That's exactly, the, the board follows the same, same thing when the board moves forward. So, in reality, when you ask the board for its decision, the board makes decisions on a case-by-case basis, just like you would. So, you're then asking, like, it's like one judge asking another judge, what should I do on this? When you should be using all the information from all of the experts, from planning, from the Law Department, using all of those resources. But the BMZA is not your best resource because the BMZA looks at things on a case-by-case basis. And they take testimony, and they have hearings, and they make a decision as a group. So, to ask the board, and I think what had necessarily been done in the past is the executive director was weighing in on it. But that's not what the law says. The law says the board must weigh in on it, you know? So, it's, so, so the board made a determination that it would defer to Planning Commission on all things that come forward. Now, we deferred to planning on this one because we had already worked through the bill with planning and dealt with the Title 3s, 4s, 5s that impacted the function of the board. So, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, and you're like, why am I getting this piece of paper? Why are you not giving me the information that I need to, you know, to make decisions?
Well, I guess the point is that, you know, council, most of the time, we want information from the BMZA, BMZA and, because we are decision makers as well. And our, the committee hearings that we have are to share information with our constituency and for the public. And if we don't, we just feel lapsed in getting information as decision makers.
So, for the board to actually give you information on those zoning bills that come before you, I would have to prepare staff reports, they would have to review them, and they would have to make a recommendation to you as the board. That, to be perfectly honest, they don't have time for that. They meet twice a month to do that. If it was, if it was changed and staff could make a recommendation, that would be one thing. But the law says that the board shall make the recommendation. And that's, that's.
So, it really sounds like that state law needs to be changed correctly.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It does. So, we're in a little bit of a catch-22 when it comes to that.
Understood. Councilman Stokes?
I guess you answered my question. My concern is if it becomes before the BMZA, and that's why you have Mr. Jeffrey Veal over as the administrator, why is it, again, always referred to planning and not come to the council first? I, I just don't understand why that process. You said you're referring this one today, but you also referred a whole bunch of them, from BMZA to planning also. That's not the first time.
Right.
So, my concern is the same as Council Vice President. We get the last end of actually the information, and I'm just concerned about why I go from BMZA to planning. I just don't understand. You say it's the law, unless it's something new that I did not know, but it just don't make sense that it go to planning and then we get it afterwards.
Maybe I'm not explaining it right.
Hillary, you want to make a statement with the law?
Yeah, I mean, if, if it would help. So, state law was created long before it sort of gives us the ability to zone. You know, if the General Assembly hadn't given it to us, they'd have kept it for themselves. And so, the thought was the zoning board needs to comment. The, the problem is, as things have evolved, the city zoning code only gives the zoning board some of the things. And it sits as a, you know, like a trial court. You guys sit sometimes as a trial court, you know, when you're looking at an individual person's property. But like for this hearing, you're making policy decisions. Everyone's property is affected, the whole code is affected. So, to the, to read that whole scheme in harmony, you'd want the BMZA to comment on large policy matters if they wanted to. And it would be like saying, look, you know, I'm in the General Assembly and I'm going to make this new law that talks about, you know, government buildings. We'd really like everyone in a government building to comment. Well, what about the court system? You know, the chief judge may comment, they may, she may say, gosh, my building's great, thank you so much, or geez, this is falling down. But when it came to the actual substance of passing that law, she's in a tribunal. She can't really give you any kind of support there. And the same is true here. I mean, the BMZA sits as like a trial court for the types of matters that you determine under our zoning code need to go to the BMZA. Some don't, some do. So, you guys decide sort of what they hear. So, they're, they can certainly comment as a general board on general matters, like, gee, you know, this zoning code rewrite is really important to us, but instead of giving you separate comments on it, we went through planning first, we thought it'd be easier. So, now the board blesses my work with the Planning Department and says, yep, we really need these changes in the zoning code. But when you send them, or when they by law are commenting on a matter that you're hearing as the trial court, they have nothing to say because they didn't have their trial. You told them this is something that's, say, conditional by ordinance. So, they didn't take testimony, they have no hearing. You said not conditional by BMZA. So, for all those bills, when you don't just make policy, but you're literally deciding which ones, they don't need to come to the council, they can go to BMZA, they have a hearing and a hearing process. If you ask them to comment on something where you've given yourself the requirement for the hearing, they have nothing to say, if that makes sense. Because they never had a hearing, they didn't take testimony, they didn't study it. And as, as Katie said, you know, if the law said the BMZA director shall weigh in, that'd be different. That would be like, gee, you know, God, how many times have we rezoned 123 Smith Street? Do we really want to go through this again? But when you're asking the board, it can only act by voting. It's a public body, and it would have to vote on something, and there's nothing before it. They had no witnesses, no hearing, no testimony. So, you keep getting standby planning, standby planning, because that's all they can say. They just didn't have their, you know, you, and in fact, it's not that they didn't have a trial, it's that your zoning code said that isn't a type of bill or permission that goes to them. You know, if it's conditional by ordinance and then the zoning board gives you a bill report, it's always going to say, I don't know, we stand by planning. Because they didn't take any testimony, they have no information they're allowed to report on, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Hillary.
I was kind of sitting here thinking, should, should we treat zoning like a separate agency? Because they're administering zoning policy.
Actually, no. Because under state law, they are, the zoning board is literally a board to hear zoning matters. The policy of zoning is basically a cooperation between, you know, Katie at the, at the head of zoning as a city employee and planning. You know, when planning looks at something and goes, gosh, we're having such a trouble in this neighborhood, it's because everything's zoned wrong. That's out of planning, like the legislative type part, the policymaking, like this bill, that, the city has sort of complete control over that. But state law forced you, as you probably would anyway, to create a zoning board, a separate entity that hears stuff. In some of the tiny, and I'm not using that pejoratively, but some of the tinier counties in the state, like, they have less business. So, their council will sit as a zoning board in certain matters, but they don't have the volume that we have, and most big counties and cities don't do that. So, I mean, they are a separate agency to, to this, you know, when you think bill report, you know, just like you might get something from BPD, or you might get something from whatever, sure, they're an agency in that sense, but they can't, it's not like the Law Department where I can say something and then, you know, the solicitor approves it and we're good to go. They're a body, like, they can't, you couldn't like ask just one commissioner, what does the BMZA say? They have to vote. So, it's kind of like Board of Estimates. So, I mean, in that instance, I think the state law was just created a long time ago, and they were thinking probably more about either smaller counties or larger policy issues. But in practice, there are so many things that the BMZA hears on its own, and then there's so much that they never hear, that changing the state law to just remove that or simply say, you know, we're looking for BMZA input when it's something they can comment on. Some language change would, would prevent you from continuously getting a bunch of bills that, you know, or bill reports that don't really help you. You know what I mean?
What about the zoning administrator weighing in on bills?
I mean, I can take a look at the state law, but, you know, the problem there is they can't, they can't explain the law to you. That's my joyful job. They can't really give you policy because that's planning. They're really just there to be, you know, and again, not, not adjust, not pejorative, but they're there to administer the BMZA. So, I mean, they're not going to have anything, I would think, probably more to say. And it seems like they cooperate pretty regularly with planning to sort of make sure they're.
Kind of the educational piece.
Well.
Yeah.
And I would just add, particularly with the zoning administrator, his position lives within DHCD. And so, DHCD comments for the bill. So, theoretically, that should be incorporated into whatever the DHCD report is. So, typically, and I'll say from the planning perspective, you know, as Katie Byrne mentioned, we work very closely with all of them, you know? Because even from a policy perspective, we want to understand not only what are we proposing in the text as far as how would it operate on the ground, but how would it operate if there's a legal challenge? How would it operate under enforcement? How would it operate under all of these different conditions? So, in order to do that, we actually have to speak with and sit with the people who, you know, do these things. For Mr. Veal, and I can attest, really, even though we get 1,000 calls about what is the zoning for this, what is, can we do this? It's his role as a zoning administrator to interpret the zoning code. So, it is, it is his department that gives the zoning verification letters. And so, we have to work really closely in order to facilitate any of these things. And I can't speak to the state law, you know, that's their, their role. But what I can say is, from the Department of Planning, we serve the Planning Commission, and everything that comes through the Planning Commission is coming through a public hearing. So, to your point earlier, we vet that, and there is opportunity for testimony. Even before Planning Commission, we typically don't even have a report or anything from BMZA. So, when we give a staff report, and for example, I'll say on rezoning bills, where you have the different standards and findings of fact, and one of them speaks to BMZA, if you read, there is always a line that up to this date BMZA has not commented, and that's why. So, but that doesn't mean that we haven't spoken to or had the conversation or understanding about it. It's just that it's not from that formal, that formal body.
Maybe somewhere down the road, we need to look at the whole structure as a, as a council.
Maybe so.
But I do want to recognize Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the Third District, Member of the Committee, and also Councilman Glover of the Thirteenth District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other questions to Jeffrey Veal, or Planning, or BMZA? From Councilman Stokes?
I just have a comment, and I understand the state law, but just listening to this conversation, it really looks like planning has all the power in the decisions in this. Well, that's what it sound like.
And Madam Chair, I mean, from a policy perspective, absolutely, because planning's part of the mayor and city council of Baltimore. You guys hold that legislative policy, and they, of course, have the executive side. But the BMZA itself is a state-created entity, that board. So, I mean, they're, they're really not intended to have a policy role under state law.
Yeah, and I, I think for, with the role of planning, I mean, we do a breadth of work in terms of master planning, you know? And if you read through the city charter and all the, the different aspects, because that's the nature of what we have to do. We have to look comprehensively at everything. We would not be doing our job if we weren't. But what we don't have is enforcement powers. We don't have permitting powers other than, you know, signing off on a permit. So, in order to even create a bill such as this one, we have to speak with the people, you know, that have. you know, that have these duties. So we, we don't have all the power, but we do try to bring, you know, I think, all of the different perspectives and try to, you know, I think, use and, use the people and resources that we have. We have community planners, so we have people that are on the ground, you know, that are hearing. So we, you know, we do try to balance, I think, all of it.
Thank you. And I do want to recognize Erin Graffery from the General Counsel for the, for the council.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, now we have Tamara Woods that will begin with the titles.
Okay, so we are doing Title 10, so we're on page 20 of the bill. So, and I'll, I'll go through it, and of course, I think like last time, you know, you'll, you'll just kind of stop me if there are any questions or different comments. So, Title 503 is pretty easy, at least from our perspective. The only thing that we're seeking to add, and this is regarding new curb cuts, is see design manual. That's just a reference to say, go look at the design manual, because a lot of people may not realize that there might be something in there that impacts it. So that's all that is. The Title 11 is industrial districts. So this one, and I know we have our partner from BDC here that I might defer to...
Tamara, Councilman Dorsey has a question.
Oh, yeah, a question. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Tamara. On the 10-503, this is specifically in the section on design standards for the C5 district. Titus, Title 10 is commercial districts in general. Are there other places in the code where we specify something as specific as primary streets?
Not that I know of. That's the, the only reference that I know of, and in the design manual, it's very clear which streets are considered primary streets. So one of the conversations that we've had, you know, I think internally, is definitional of primary street, and if that is something that people are more interested in, then we would have to sit down with DOT and get more of a determination. But would, because it's in the design manual, it's really coming from the perspective of urban design and not necessarily, I'll say placement of curb cuts within the broader context of C5, and not necessarily street design, which is really under the purview of DOT. So that's why it's really just simply something that's pointing to the design manual, which is urban design-based, and not technically based of, you know, all the different things that DOT may consider as a primary street.
So are you saying that the, that the design manual as a planning department document makes existing reference to primary street?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
Okay. And then I imagine that it also makes reference to like secondary and tertiary streets?
I think it only, off the top of my head, only goes to the primary streets. It doesn't go that deep.
I see. And, and are you saying that there isn't a specific definition of primary street within the design manual?
Not that I can recall at the moment, and there isn't one in this code that I know of. So, no.
Okay. So this might seem a good opportunity to just, instead of using that language and referencing the design manual, just take the plunge and reference the language that DOT uses in the complete streets manual as an alternative, because that does reference, instead of like primary and secondary streets, it's like, like arterials, collectors, and neighborhood streets.
Right.
And they're, and they have other documents that make similar references, that it would make sense for all of our things to just come into alignment when we have this opportunity.
I think we would have to talk about that, because again, some of it is coming from different perspectives. When they're talking about the complete streets, they're talking about roadway design. So what is a typical street section? But, but, one, one second. The, the design manual, as it speaks to urban design, is really about where do we want more traffic coming from, say, a garage onto the street? And so it's not saying no, but we would have to have that discussion, because there will be, I'm thinking right off the, the top of my head, like, I would want to pull in Downtown Partnership, because they're master planning for downtown. So when we're talking, and this kind of goes back to the conversation we had, you know, just a few moments ago, about the role of the planning department, and how we really work with different entities to help execute a vision. And so while the terminology might be the same, the rationale might be different as to why we use them. So I don't know if the, if the solution is to directly go with what DOT says, or if we change our term. You know, that's something that I think we could talk about, and I do know, you know, from Planning Commission, this particular, this particular piece, there were some, some comments, I know from Bike More and conversations that we've had with Bike More and concerns about traffic downtown. So I think there is a lot of conversation to be had, especially about what we do downtown. And so we would definitely, I think, welcome a discussion.
So it sounds like that there is a reference to primary streets in, in many areas. So this looks like a, that it is an issue that needs to be fully reviewed with DOT and, and other agencies involved. So we're going to make note of that as well. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. My other point about this is that, is that the same concerns would exist outside of the C5 area. C5 is an anomaly of a, in terms of zoning classifications. It's the only one that references a specific geographic area in the city. None of the other C zones are confined to just one portion of the city, with the exception, of course, of like the Fort Covington Districts, which is an anomaly in and of itself. That it, that in general, where we see things like C2 and C3 are a, as a land use distinction aligned with Planning's realm, is on arterial roads almost exclusively as a term defined in, and you, and referenced in DOT's realm. And the same principle of not wanting to add additional curb cuts would exist in C2 and C3 areas, or C1 for that matter, along arterial roads in those other areas. And having the ability to reference arterial roads makes a lot of sense, because it allows us to address this principle in other places other than downtown. And I think that that's something that needs to be addressed at this moment, at this, you know, as well.
We're taking note of that as well. DOT, did you want to comment on this subject at this point?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, we definitely want to open up the conversation with the planning department, and we definitely value the council's feedback today. It's definitely something that could probably, could benefit from some additional eyes looking at it. So we're welcome. I'll follow up with you via email.
Sure.
After this hearing, we'll set that up. Thank you.
And I, I think just to, to kind of add on, I think it's fine for us to look at that, and just as a matter of record, just off the top of my head, the minute you take something from, to your point, that's very specialized and related to C5 and move it citywide, then our analysis from a policy perspective is going to broaden, because one of the things that I'm immediately thinking I would want to look at is, you know, really the, the alley layout, the plat maps, all of these different things, because as a policy, and these are things that we have to consider, you know, even not just from a roadway perspective, but even from a market perspective for the neighborhoods, and what is their ability to build on a lot if they don't have X, Y, and Z? And so I know these are conversations that we've had, but just want to say for the record, these are the types of things that we have to broaden the scope on in terms of research and making sure that we have the proper information. Because everything as related to something that goes local to a citywide policy, when it goes to Planning Commission and even before City Council, we have to have, you know, I think, a different level of information that we have to give to you in order to say, this is, can be supported, or this cannot be supported, and why. So I think we would be welcome to do that due diligence and find out exactly what information we need and talk with you more.
Appreciate it. Those market factors seem to be kind of innately baked into certain things like, I can understand like the market factor of like a C3 property or a C4 property, which is by definition a car-intensive, car-access-intensive use, is going to likely include some sort of street-fronting parking lot access, something like that. Whereas a C2 or a C1 not only is not expected to be a car-access-intensive use, but is highly representative of the same concerns that I think are driving this
Sure.
...policy decision about C5.
Sure.
It's that we want to preserve pedestrian, pedestrian environments and walkability, and deter auto-oriented access as something that is detrimental to the kind of community development that we take for granted as a motivator in the downtown area. But, but, you know, and, and with all this in consideration, we want along arterial roads throughout communities in the city, have not done a good job of promoting along arterial roads historically in the city, and where the scarcity of C3 and C4-type properties along those arterial roads takes care of the, much of that market-based kind of concern undermining that will to pedestrianize.
Yeah, no, I, I, we, we definitely need to look at it, because I think, you know, and I'm also just thinking, from a programmatic standpoint, we would have to fold in DOT's curb cut policy, we would have to really look at all of those things. So it isn't just the, the text that would go into the code, but it's any kind of rippling effect through any other programs that they have. So I think we'll, we'll definitely have to step back and we can look at all of those different things.
Great, thank you. Look forward to follow up on that.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Moving on.
Okay. So we are on, still on page 20, 11-203, the IMU mixed-use districts. And so this particular piece is, is really dealing with the, the floor area exception that basically says that you don't have to have 50% of your ground floor area be industrial. So thereby not doing that, you could do a fully residential property in IMU. And that is not the intent of IMU, that is not what IMU was written for. So we are proposing to remove, starting on line 28, the actual exception. And I, I can speak to it a little bit, but I think we have our expert here from BDC. I don't know, he doesn't have a mic, but I can...
You can pass it over. Identify yourself.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Andy Cook. I'm here representing Baltimore Development Corporation. The intent of removing this, this exception is really about maintaining the spirit of the industrial mixed-use zone. These zones were created under Transform Baltimore. It was a new zoning category that the city hadn't had before. And most of the IMU zones, nearly all of them are considered sort of buffer zones between industrial and residential areas. So nearly all of them fall within this description of being within 300 feet of a residential area. So this essentially removes that requirement from the industrial mixed-use zoning description of having some use other than residential or parking remaining in the building. The idea of the industrial mixed-use zone, zoning category is to not only allow for that type of mixed, mix of uses between residential, commercial, and light industrial, but also to maintain and preserve some amount of light industrial space in the city at the same time. So by removing this exception, we preserve that aspect of the zoning category, which is the maintenance of some space for light manufacturing.
Back in Transform Baltimore, I'm just trying to remember, was it an issue with, with funding, maintenance, or any of that? Was that discussed?
That was before my time, so I'm not sure what the, what the rationale was for it, to be totally honest.
I think you mean the, the rationale for the exception?
Yes.
So I don't know that, that funding was a specific issue, but at the time that we were writing Transform Baltimore, there was a lot of discussion as to how to create a variety of mixed-use zones that would allow for, you know, existing industrial buildings that were no longer, you know, occupied or functioning, you know, as they were in their heyday. And so we have them all over the city. So we were very much aware, I think at the time, that, and even more so now, that there was some element of residential development pressure. But there is always that balance to retain industrial, and how do you have the two coexist? So there we birthed IMU. And at the time, it was only one IMU, wasn't IMU1 or IMU2. That's a more recent, I think in the past, what, like, three years that we created, we were, it was pre-COVID, that we created the IMU2. So I don't know that it was necessarily the economics of something going vacant, but it was definitely about the economics and the marketability of buildings that were sitting vacant, and giving them the opportunity to have new life in a way that was current, you know, in the world that we're living in.
Okay. I'm still here trying to think if some of the discussion was about where storefronts were, or stores in residential areas.
So it, it...
And I know, and my, East Baltimore has a, you know, that's a big industrialized area.
So at the time, in the area that I can think of, that I, I know at the time I did as IMU was in East Baltimore Midway, if you know that particular neighborhood. It's a really large neighborhood in, in Councilman Stokes' area that, you know, stretches from Greenmount Avenue over to Harford Road. And tucked in there, there were plenty of industrial buildings that had really, you know, seen better days. And so we were, were trying to really figure out how to allow neighborhoods to, to have kind of this mix of uses that we were hearing, quite frankly, when you, not only you're talking about storefronts and retail, but you're talking about walk-to-jobs, you're talking about the ability for housing. And so that's where this was really birthed from. And so yes, we did include wanting to have that ground floor retail, and that's what we're trying to be able to protect by, by saying, let's remove this exception, because we are not trying to have IMU become a de facto residential zoning category.
Okay. Any questions? Moving on.
Let's see. So we're on Title 14, so page 21, and we'll start with farmer's market, farmer's markets. So this is right now, and we'll get to the removal of what's in the code a little bit later, but right now, farmer's markets are temporary use. They're super popular, and just at this point, a mainstay. And so it's no longer, you know, a good thing to keep it temporary. So we are proposing to create a category, a use category for farmer's markets that is a permanent something. And so what you see in line four, starting in line four, is the definition. In this section, farmer's market means a market in a fixed location. Did you want me to read through all this like we did last time, or...
You don't, no, you don't. You can just kind of generalize.
Generalize and go through. So the, the second piece in 14 is where allowed, so farmer's markets are allowed in any zoning district on a lot, or contiguous lots of at least 3,500 square feet. So these are a little bit larger, they're still neighborhood-sized, but they're not like the single 700-square-foot lot. They're still neighborhood-sized, but they're not like the single 700-square-foot lot, you know, or something like that, that they have to have a site plan included in their, their initial application. So that means we need to understand what is the layout, what is your plan, you know, all of those things. And the goal for our farmer's markets is really about healthy foods and, you know, all of that and bringing them to the community. So what we've done, even though we know they're popular for many other reasons, we've limited or at least proposed to limit the arts and crafts, limitation at 25%. We want to keep the focus on being around foods, you know, a farmer's market for foods. So that's 14312. Any, before we move to outdoor dining, any questions or comments?
Could you define fixed location?
So it's permanent. So right now, temporary, they pick up and, you know, they go or when their permit expires, you know, I don't know for, I think Katie left, but for right now, I guess they have to do the temporary permit that says we want this day, that day, you know, or however many series of days throughout the year. But the minute you get like kind of your permanent use approval, then you can be there all year, all year long. So I don't know if
Could I have a housing? Did you want to comment? I know that a lot of, you know, new, since farmer's markets are popular all over and some people are using vacant city-owned lots, any comment or update that you could mention?
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdaugh, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. I'm not aware of the, the farmer's markets and the vacant lots in particular. It's something I could look into, but I believe DOT has a role in the permitting of the farmer's markets, so it might be a better question for them.
Hillary, what is it? I see something on, I guess it's number seven and eight, where it says consigned. Is that me, is it mandatory?
I mean, you don't necessarily have to, but I think it's, the consigned is indicating that the farmer, him or herself, doesn't have to be the seller of the food at the stall. They can use like, I'm making this up. I, I go to farmersmarketsforyou.com, who like comes to your farm and your neighbor's farm and the next farm and says, this stuff's all grown in Carroll County and it's, so you don't, and you don't own the goods, they can sign them to you, which is like the property version of like bailment in law school. It's like, you don't own it, but you have the right to sell it. And then once it's sold, then you give the proceeds to the owner and take a cut. So I think the goal here is just to make sure that they are capturing all the fresh fruits and vegetables that could be captured that aren't the ones in grocery stores. So you're not getting like Giant Foods Outdoor Pair Market. You know, you're getting, it's got to be either, you know, we're getting at the fruit, the fruit, vegetables, whatever, grown by the actual vendor or someone they've consigned it to, but not like Target or Giant.
Should we make that kind of clarity on, in that section?
I mean, I think, I think that's the intent. I could be, I mean, shout it out if I'm wrong, but like
I mean, is it that the word is just, we need a better word? I think that's what she's
Yeah, I mean, you could certainly do, you know, that have been produced or grown.
Consigned to you. We
Yeah, I'm trying to
I was just thinking, you know, as police ride around do, and they say, was this consigned to you?
I doubt they would, but they could. I mean, certainly you'd have problems if you stole all the groceries from Giant and then tried to sell them at the farmer's market, but, you know, I think they're just trying to get at the concept of like, you know, locally grown. So I mean, yeah, other words might do the same thing. I don't care.
Yeah, we can look and see if there's a, a better, simpler word, I think, more clarity.
Councilman Dorsey, you wanted to add a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Merriam-Webster's definition of consign includes, as one of its definitions, assign, commit decisively or permanently. It doesn't, it's not limited to what I think of as like a consignment shop where I hand something over and receive nothing in turn unless they sell it. It, the later definitions, Merriam-Webster also, to give over to another's care, to give, transfer, or deliver into the hands or control of another, like
Yeah, I hear you, but the, the legal
That's inclusive enough of like, if I bought the groceries from somebody who produced them and
And I see what you're saying, but like, pretend I'm not as nerdy as this is gonna sound. Like in law school, consignment isn't just like consignment in the general, Merriam-Webster. It's a legal term between debtors and creditors. So it's like you've got to actually be in the position of the larger terms like a bailment. You have to actually, help me out here, Aaron. You've got to actually like own, you have to have that kind of particular banking and creditor interest so that you didn't just like buy it from Betty or something. You know, you have to have that relationship where you're possessing it for the sole purpose of reselling it. Am I getting anywhere near?
Absolutely correct. You get an A on my law exam. But that, that's what I was going to come back to is that the definition that would apply in the law wouldn't be the dictionary definition, it'd be the, a legal definition. So one way to address it could be to add, you know, consignment in a definition earlier that would clarify and specify that somebody couldn't have, to eliminate the ambiguity. So that, that could be a, a simpler way to, to address the problem.
The average person does, Merriam-Webster.
I also think there's like little to no chance that Giant is setting up a produce stand on an empty lot in the city.
Yeah, that's just not our issue.
Maybe not Giant, but there's other stores.
Oh, thank you. Any other questions on this piece? Moving on.
Okay. So we're going to jump into outdoor dining and I would imagine we're going to have a good discussion because there, there've been a lot of, oh, we have another, Councilman Dorsey, I think had his hand up.
Madam Chair.
And I do know it's some amendments being proposed for that as well.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. In between 14312 farmer's markets and 14328 neighborhood commercial establishments, in the amendments, occurs 14314, a whole insertion of a section on fuel stations. Are we, if we're going to cover things chronologically as they would come in the code, are we going to cover this now or, or later?
Oh, okay. It's an amendment, so are you saying that you want us to follow, you would like us to follow the fuel stations?
I mean, if we're covering Title 14 at this point, it would seem to make sense to cover 14.
See, do we have?
Do you have the amendment?
No, I don't have any of these.
Oh, okay.
Well, this isn't, this is Planning Amendment Number 7.
Oh, it's our amendment.
Yeah.
I know, we have tons, okay. Okay, wait a minute. That's not our amendment number 7. Which amendment? Where's?
Could you repeat where it is?
Yeah, Planning Department Amendments. Planning Amendment, this is dated March 1st, '22. Planning Amendment Number 7 on page 21 after line 24, insert 14314.
Oh, it's from the, the legislative reference that our bill report. Hold on.
And if, look, if planning is not, was not planning on presenting this today, is not ready yet, that's fine, no problem, just bringing it up for continuity's sake.
No, it's a, it's a, no, I have that one, but I was looking for it. I was looking for it in our staff report. That's what's ruining me. Like, when did we actually put that in?
I'm okay if we come back to this later.
See, okay.
So just as a matter of note, we, you know, we can talk about the amendments, but of course, we're going to be voting in a separate block on all the amendments down the road.
Okay.
That's a separate day with all the amendments.
So I can talk, I can talk a little bit about it. So this was an addition. That's where, it's at the end of our table in our staff report. So this was in addition, so if you looked at our table, it is in addition to the bill. So this particular one is, is really just about the name change. So what we're seeking to do is remove the word gas and replace it with the word fuel as a recognition that fuel is more than just gas. And so it doesn't really change how fuel stations would work. When you look at the amendment, we didn't go that far. We did talk a little bit about it, but this particular one, if you read all through it, is really just changing the word gas to fuel. So we do know that there have been a lot of discussions even about electronic charging stations, but that's already exempt and allowed in the zoning code that most people don't recognize. So you can do the electronic charging stations where the discussion would probably need to go is not about whether or not you can or cannot do them, it's about balance of how you would like to see them in neighborhoods or as a part of, you know, say a petroleum-based fueling station. So this particular amendment doesn't touch all of those as a policy issue, it's just really changing the word gas to fuel.
So is this in, I'm not sure if this is a solution in search of a problem. Is there, I don't think that there's any likelihood that like your traditional gas station is going to change over to be a place where people pull in and pull out for three and a half minutes of electronic charging, electric charging. Is there some anticipation that there, like that whole properties would get like, because what we're talking about is a definition of a use, as if we anticipate properties being invested in as a primary use just for electric charging?
They may be, but again, this really is just an acknowledgement of name. It is not, you know, it is not intended to speak to that piece of it, but we do know that there are concerns and desires that what you, you just spoke about would happen, but the way the code is written with electronic charging stations is they can occur. And so we haven't dealt with, and I haven't had that conversation with Mr. Veal about the ramifications of even moving the language from an exemption into a use category as it relates to electronic charging stations, because the way it's written as an exemption is you can, if you get an electric vehicle, you can do your electronic charger on your house, which is not the case if, unless we create, I'm trying to think of as a code structure to get, to talk about what you're kind of getting at, as a standalone use, if that's what you're desiring, then from a code structure and a use table, you create it as a standalone use because what you're saying is that you don't necessarily want the gas piece of it there.
I'm saying I don't necessarily want more properties in general taken up as just fueling stations. Like, I don't want Main Street on Harford Road to suddenly have an electronic
DOT wants to weigh in.
Yeah, but I don't want an electric charging property on the middle of my Main Street either, and this is, it seems to invite
So, if I may, if I may, thank you. And Ms. Woods, I think hit on a number of great points. DOT works with Parking Authority and HCD and a number of our partner agencies here today on our internal electric vehicle work group. I think Ms. Woods characterizes, characterizes this correctly, it's just simply really a name change. To your question, Councilman, we actually are seeing initial examples of actual traditional gas stations converting completely over to EV. I think the actual first example of this was in Maryland, like in, around the DC region. So we are kind of gearing up for that. That's definitely something that could happen. And then we're also kind of unrelatedly working on kind of expanding the city's public EV charger offerings. And those are going to be increasingly, like, they'll probably at some point, 10, 15, 20 years from now, be as common as parking meters. So that's kind of where we are. Thank you.
And you wouldn't want, I mean, if your concern is not adding more, then you would probably want to keep it as is because right now, you're not precluded from doing either. The minute you begin to separate and go to, you must do this here and you must do it this way here, then someone who wants to do that will seek out a property to do what they can only do that's separate and apart. So you, you have to just kind of think through where are these things already allowed and what are the benefits of the exemption that we have? And it sounds like the exemption is serving the purpose that DOT needs and that the city needs in order to allow, you know, them the way that they need to be. So with the exemption, what it's allowing in addition to say having it on your home, you actually have a few charging stations within, now, I'm going to say this and I understand what I'm about to say, in parking garages, but, you know, it allows that flexibility that you don't have with an actual gas station, nor would you want to have with an actual gas station.
Yeah. I'm, this is highly concerning to me. I think that, like, one, the reason that we have pump limits on gas stations is because of kind of the in-and-out flow of vehicles and some sort of like rapid volume, you know, two, three, six, seven minutes, something like that, in, out, in, out, in, out. And that necessitates a certain design layout to the property to facilitate that in, out, you know, of eight cars and times two if they're queuing up. You don't necessarily want those same sort of limitations on a vehicle that is going to necessarily come in and sit stationary for anywhere between an hour, you know, half hour, 15 minutes, two hours, three hours. I have no idea how long it takes to charge an EV, but, you know, for vehicles to sit stationary like that, it's not at all the same thing. I wouldn't necessarily want it limited to only eight pumps and at the same ti, no, pumps. And at the same time, I absolutely do not want to invite these like vast wastes of space along Main Streets and anywhere that we have C2-oriented properties where gas stations are conditionally bored. You know, I just don't want that.
Well, this, this amendment doesn't change anything that you can or cannot do. It literally just changes what we call a gas station or fuel station. We're not actually touching what you can do, we're not touching the EV, you know, exemption.
But it would allow an EV fuel station anywhere that, in a C2 property where you could have a gas station.
But this, this doesn't touch that. We're literally just changing, so let me hold on.
And if I may jump in, I think, I think, again, I think it's strictly just a name change. It's, it's like, you know, we update code all the time to, to update terminology to meet, you know, 21st century standards. And I can't really think of an example off the top of my head, but this is really just updating the name.
So you're just changing gas to fuel?
Yeah. And I mean, like, ideally, we would see the, over time, these, these existing fuel stations just kind of take the initiative to convert over to EVs. And you're, you're starting to see that happen a little bit.
Okay, but so we're, on the one hand, I'm hearing the intent here is clearly related to EVs, but what am I, am I also hearing that fuel is not inclusive of electronic charging?
Correct. So if we go back to page four of the bill, where the definition of fuel station is, if you, like, just kind of, I want to go back to page four and five. So on page four, on line 15, we insert the new definition fuel in the inclusions, and then on page five, we actually delete gas station and its inclusions. And when you look at them, they are, you know, pretty much, you know, word for word, except we are adding the ability to do electronic charging stations where it becomes, I think, and this would be a question that I would, you know, kind of ask Hillary Rulie about, is because we do have the exemption already in the code, that it's kind of duplicative, it, it It, it doesn't effectively do really anything, because without those words, you can still do it.
Yeah, it's, this is a tough one, because we call them gas stations, but they dispense liquid. So if we really want to go down this road, it's not clear as it's written. So if the term fuel isn't the umbrella for gas, electricity, whatever, then what does it mean if it's not a synonym for what we call a gas station? So again, you know, the word gas, very few of them dispense any gas, they dispense liquids, right? So, you know, we're using that colloquial term, right? So what do we mean by gas station? Are we just using the colloquial term of stuff that goes in your car? You know, you could really go down a rabbit hole here. I understand what the intent was, but by the same token, if you say gas, no one thinks an electrical veh, you know, an electric vehicle is getting gas, when?
Hillary, you know-
I had a question about this too. By the way, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, just, would, we just presume it means gasoline?
Yeah, you could presume it means gasoline, but technically, it's petroleum and it's a liquid. So, I mean, we're going down this road, you know, so I think you do want to be clear from a legal standpoint, what you want to regulate, because, you know, technically, electric ions are going to be closer to a gas than petroleum. So do, you know, do what it is that you want to regulate, but I think this discussion makes it clear that this term probably isn't clear.
Madam Chair. It's all substance.
Yeah, it, it is, and I think, you know, we did start going down this rabbit hole, which is why you're seeing the language. We just came to a stopping point, because when you start looking up, you know, what other types of fuel, and I'm by no means an expert on any of this, so when you start looking up what other types of fuel there are, and if we're coming from the perspective of trying to keep the code relevant for many years, then there is more than gasoline or petroleum out there. And so we were simply trying to be inclusive of what all of that could be, and it wasn't-
Beginning of being more environmental.
Right, so we weren't-
Environmental changes.
We're open.
Councilmen, and Councilwoman Ramos.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize, I had to step out for a second, but when I came in, I'm totally familiar with this, because I had a lot of questions about it. The, I'm not, I think Liam and Gabe in my office, we all had this, and we also talked about it with, with Avery, because my, my concern about changing the name to fuel station for all of that, is that there's still, like, there's environmental concerns around a gas station, and envi, you know, when you're redoing a gas station to be something else, you've got brownfields concerns. You don't have that when you've got an EV station, right? So to me, it's like totally apples and oranges. Fuel is not the same as EV, or, or gas is not the same as EV, so why would you put it all in one category? So what we decided, and I don't know if this was the right decision, with Avery was, well, we're just going to do a separate bill to try to resolve this issue, because it might be a little bit too complicated for this one, but it, there's so many more implications here in terms of how you treat this environmentally and what's regulated and all of that, just to put everything in one category doesn't seem to make sense to me.
So I guess the best, the question is, is that the best term to start this road of changing things and for our environmental-
Well, I think it's pretty clear that fuel would include gas, EV, something else. I mean, fuel's just the word of makes the thing go, right?
Right.
So that would be definitely expansive in the way that Councilman Dorsey and you, Councilwoman Ramos have indicated. It's definitely a change, and I think pretty much every court would look at it as an expansion beyond what we call gasoline or petroleum. I don't know if you want to go that route for all the things. I mean, from a definitional standpoint, that's an expansion. I don't know if you then want to tighten in other areas, so fuel stations are allowed in certain places, but fuel stations only selling petroleum or in a different station? I mean, it's up to you.
Well, that's the thing, it's because, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, because if we're saying in certain parts of the code, it says fuel sta, or gas stations are only in certain places, and here we are putting EV chargers all over the place, right? So it doesn't make sense to me.
So, but that's where I think with Councilman Dorsey's point is, he doesn't want to see standalone electronic stations where cars just park there for half an hour, so to create a standalone category that we then have to apply to a use table would do exactly what he's saying he doesn't want.
Right.
So there's a problem.
Department of Transportation, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries, and I do, I think this is a great conversation, and I think specifically when we talk about fuel station, when it comes to EVs, that's off-street, right? And I think part of the reasoning of saying, hey, we should upgrade the definition of gas stations to fuel stations, is so the EV station, like, the future EV stations that we're anticipating are kind of folded in under the city's existing regulations, because I don't really think there's anything on the books presently to rein them in. That's why we wanted it under the same kind of regulations as the gas stations. And it's, it's separate, like, we are working with BGE. If this body passed a franchise agreement the last term, that's for on-street chargers, and we should think of those as almost like parking meters. They do, you know, supply energy to the cars, but it's, it's kind of, it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison with a traditional fuel pump and an EV charger. Like, people can put an EV charger in their parking pad in the back of their house, nobody's installing a gas pump, you know, in the back of their house to charge their, or to fill their car up.
And the zoning code doesn't impact the city's right-of-way, except for in very limited situations, so when we're talking about changing the zoning code, we are talking about real property, and so for the most part. And if you look at 2-202, the exempt utility and governmental uses, in number eight, it says automobile charging stations, whether electric or solar. So I think, because this is, you know, like I said, we went down the rabbit hole and decided we needed to stop, so again, I think with this one, you know, there's a lot of policy discussion that needs to happen around it in direction, so if this particular change is causing that mu, much angst, then I'm okay with keeping it as is today and having the broader policy discussion, because we do have the exemption in 2-202, we're not missing anything. You can still do the electric charging stations, and you can still do the solar ones, so.
And if I may, if that's the route we want to go, just to advance this legislation, we can always work with Councilwoman Ramos down the road on her bill. There's no objection here.
I didn't know if I was going to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Totally up to you, Councilman.
I think we spent ample time on that piece. Moving on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just to-
Madam Chair.
Councilman Dorsey.
Exactly. I need, we've, we've spent a lot of time discussing this, but I, I want to be clear that there needs to be a follow-up conversation before it comes to a vote that-
We'll do that follow-up conversation when we do all the amendments.
I mean offline here. I need, yeah, I need, I need to make sure that-
Sure, you're going, you want to have that directly with DOT and planning?
And Hillary as well, please.
Okay.
Happy to-
If you could include Gabe in that too.
Moving on to, I guess you're now, neighborhood commercial establishments, outdoor dining?
Yes, so let me, let me just-
And I also, I think Councilwoman Ramos has a, do you have an amendment on this?
I do have an amendment on this.
Okay. We'll let Tamara speak on this, and then you can, if you want to talk about your amendment.
Okay, so we will start on page 21, line 25. So this particular section is in our use standards, Title 14, and so 14-328, this own, this piece only applies to neighborhood commercial establishments that are conditional to the board in our residential zone. So this, I don't want you to confuse this piece with 1329, which is the broader application of outdoor dining. So J, our proposed J on line 26 says outdoor dining. This piece in and of itself is required if there is a desire to allow outdoor dining for neighborhood commercial establishments. Right now, the code does not have outdoor dining listed as one of the allowable uses for neighborhood commercial establishments. So at minimum, outdoor dining, that is what we're requiring. But then, we come in line 27 and qualify what that means specific to outdoor dining in our NCEs. So outdoor dining may only be on the street side of the property and is not allowed in the rear yard, deck, or rooftop. And so this particular language came about really just, in some cases, we know of enforcement cases that have existed, or just, you know, things that we have heard from residents that don't necessarily want outdoor dining, cheek and jowl, especially in our rowhouse neighborhoods. So we're trying to figure out a balance of allowing outdoor dining, because we know it's extremely important in walk-through communities, but also where is that limit so that it's not a nuisance for someone that's directly attached to you or in the rear? So that's where lines 27 and 28 came from, and I know we did have a conversation, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, we did have a conversation with her kind of about where that came from. So I don't know if you all have any questions for me, or if, I'm not sure how you-
Councilwoman Ramos, did you want to go ahead and discuss the, the new language?
Sure, thank you, yeah.
And you already had the conversation with planning?
Yes, we had a long conversation about the whole bill.
Planning approves, do you-
As far as I know, we'll see what-
Yeah, I think this one you, you have no problem with.
Is this the one?
So if you all have it in front of you, on my amendments, it basically, what it does is it, it breaks it up a little bit, because what they have in the original bill on page 21 just says outdoor dining can happen, but is not allowed on rear, rear yard, deck, and rooftops. And what I did was try to clarify it a little bit more and say that, so we would strike that line and insert the following. Outdoor dining may only be on the street side if the property is attached to another property, so in areas where there's like rowhouses or row businesses, it can be on the, on the street side. And then if the property is not attached, outdoor dining can be allowed on side yards and backyards. So again, to try to, you know, if it's all in one row and all of that, there's more chance of disruption, so we wanted to just clarify that if it's not attached, that you can still have backyard and side yard, and then the prohibition would just be can't do decks and rooftops in neighborhood commercial, because it could be, you know, people looking into somebody's window, so that's why.
So for the committee, she basically separated into three-
Correct.
Separate areas, and just to really explain it further.
Just to try to clarify it a little bit and, and be like super clear. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, and making a note that this was discussed with planning?
Yes.
Yes, we discussed it.
Madam Chair, if I-
Yes.
Would it be possible for me to get a copy of the amendments? Because DOT is currently taking lead on creating the city's expanded outdoor dining program, and I think Ms. Woods, you had mentioned, we had talked about this before, about an amendment that would strike the language in here that would prevent outdoor dining interfering with parking spaces?
Correct, that's in the next section.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I have that too, yeah.
Great. Councilwoman, can I get a copy of your amendments?
Uh, yes, I will make sure you get it.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Is this?
Is your question about the amendment?
It's about outdoor dining in general. Section 14-329B, I mean, we have this program that is in place now to promote outdoor dining, specifically in parking lanes. This seems like a moment to consider striking this prohibition on interfering with parking, yeah?
Did you want me, so we were on 14-328, do you want me to start discussing 14-329?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my amendment-
I'd like you to stay in order.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm supposed, yeah, yeah, we're going on to that.
Okay, you jumped the gun a little bit.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Stokes.
14-328, I know you're talking about neighborhood commercial establishments, and I know you have live jazz, kind of have all that mixed in together, and I know that it goes B7 license, the liquor board only controls the liquor license, but when it goes over to outdoor, and you're talking about, talking about a live jazz, DJ jazz, because kind of having that problem in my district now, because a particular company, a particular business don't want to do a MOU, and it's 1:30 in the morning, I'm getting calls from the residents, I mean, you blasting jazz music, you playing music, and they only want to do a MOU, so I know that's not in here, but having this here, talking about outdoor establishment and dining, a lot of dining have jazz, so I was wondering why this part wasn't in there, or am I too far ahead of myself?
So, no, I, I think I can provide a clarification for that. So restaurants with live entertainment are not allowed in neighborhood commercial establishments, so if you have one in your neighborhood that's like an end-of-row on a corner, then it's probably Zone C something, or it's a legal or possibly illegal non-conform use, that means it was already there, but when you look through 14-328, there are only very few non-residential uses that are allowed, and the list includes art galleries, no live entertainment or dancing, art studios, daycare centers, adult or child, offices, personal services establishments, restaurant, no live entertainment or dancing, retail goods establishments, no alcoholic beverage sales. So if you're having that particular issue, there's something else going on.
Okay. All right, moving on.
Okay, so 14-329, we have in the bill on page 22, I think, a number of amendments that, you know, we're seeking to really clarify where you could do outdoor dining, and I don't want to read through that, but what I want to say is, based on conversations with the communities and others prior to going to Planning Commission, we rewrote that section, and actually, in our staff report, provided a bit more of a substantial amendment that speaks to outdoor dining, so it might speak to one of your concerns. So our amendment, I will walk through instead. So it's still for 14-329, outdoor dining. We would keep some of what is in the bill, so the outdoor dining considered an accessory use and may be located on either the property for which the permit is approved or extended to the public right of way immediately adjoining the building frontage or street corner side. This is, is pretty typical. I mentioned earlier that the zoning code really only touches the real property and not the right-of-way, except for very few uses. This is one of those few uses. It can extend into the sidewalk or into a parking lot or something like that, but it has to be tied to the legal permitted use, the legal primary use for that property, so, and that's for outdoor dining. So we are making that clear, that it has to be for that property that has the permit. The second thing, and this is completely new proposal based on discussions that we've had, and, you know, rooftop dining is allowed in all non-residential zoning districts only. It is a permitted use except in the C1, C1 VC, which is Village Center, C2 zoning districts, which will require approval as a conditional use by BMZA. So we, we recognize that rooftop dining is a thing and has been for a long time, but we have not allowed it in our zoning code, so we would propose to allow that in, except for in these certain zoning districts, then we want a little, you know, closer eyes on it. So that's the, the first, I guess, big change, and then we add in a three, or renumber a three, and just say numbers one and two of the subsection is subject to the requirements set forth in this section as applicable. And then we get into the pedestrian and parking access, and I know this section has caused a lot of angst for people, because they felt that it was, oh, go ahead.
You have a question on the rooftop dining?
On the, I have more, more statement, I have, and maybe some clarification, so this, this would allow outdoor dining in previously unallowed residential establishments?
No, not necessarily. It allows it, so this Title 14 are the use standards that- It allows it, so this Title 14 are the use standards that further refine what's allowed in the use tables. So, this doesn't change where something is allowed, allowed, that's outlined actually in the use tables. So, this just kind of defines, you know, how you can do it within where it's allowed.
So, if you have an establishment, of course, that has the ability to serve food, to do dining.
Yeah, speak up.
If you have an establishment that has the ability to allow dining in a residential restaurant, per se, this doesn't extend that ability out into the right of way? Because that's the way I'm interpreting it.
No, oh, okay, I misunderstood. I thought you meant where it was not allowed as in a zoning category. No, it does extend into the right of way, and you currently can. So, a lot of the outdoor seating that you see at restaurants is actually in the right of way, it's in DOT's under their purview on the sidewalk. So, it's, it's one of those few uses that, you know, we really do call out in the code because it's tied to a use, the actual restaurant that, you know, falls under the purview of the zoning code or the real property. So, it's tied to that permitted use that, you know, Mr. Veal would see come through, you know, his shop.
So, today, we've got a restaurant in a, in a residential neighborhood, I'm thinking of one in particular, and you can probably guess which one that is. They, they can have diners now, and they want to have diners outside. They don't have the ability to do that today. This would allow them to do that without having to apply for it.
No, they, they would still, they would still need a permit. We're not, other than for rooftop dining and, and, you know, a few other things, we're not really proposing to change how the permitting system works for just regular rooftop dining. Some of the things that we definitely see as still important is you must maintain the five-foot clearance for pedestrians, all of those different things. So, they have to go through the current, you know, permitting process, and so that can happen today, as long as it's legal.
But, so the, the decision is based on the legal permitting guidelines, like if you meet certain things, not so much whether or not the decision has been made that this is actually a good use for a neighborhood?
Correct.
I'm a little concerned about that.
So, it, we go back and forth.
I'm a lot of concerned about that.
Well, let me back up. So, it's not whether it's good for a particular neighborhood, it's that the zoning code is citywide. So, we are looking at it from a citywide perspective of what's good for the city. So, when you start applying a specific zoning category to a neighborhood, that's where, at least from our perspective, we say, is this the right zoning category for that neighborhood? Because your understanding is if X zoning category, C2 allows all of these uses, and you have a neighborhood that you don't think should have C2, then you don't zone it C2. So, that's where you might look at C1. So, it, it, you, it's not, you know, just that cut and dry. We're building a code from a citywide perspective and then say, where do you apply that particular category?
I think the, the concern that I have potentially here is in instances where things are zoned not in a way that we would normally expect them to be, and as a result, it would then, this would then allow those maybe improperly zoned, or maybe too permissible zoned properties to have that additional capacity in a residential area to have outdoor dining in a way that maybe they should, they should never have had to begin with. And so, I think that's, that, that concerns me a little bit. I'm curious if there are other ways for us to do this, because I would imagine for most places that are zoned this way, this is a no-brainer, but in some instances, places maybe should not have had that zoning to begin with, and this would be maybe too permissible in, in those instances, so.
I, I think there are a few things. You know, of course, we, we did a comprehensive rezoning, but you also have to recognize that there are zoning changes and zoning bills that go through all the time. And one of the things, when we talked a lot earlier about planning commission, and we get into the weeds, one of the things that you, you probably hear from us all the time is if we're evaluating a zoning change, we never look at who or what the proposal is. It is really understanding that a zoning category runs with the land, whatever is in that category, you know, X person may leave, and next person may want to do all those things. So, in writing categories, you, it, it really is this task of understanding, does this category fit the nature of what it is you're trying to do? So, if you look at every, you know, Title 10 where the commercial is, every one of those things has a purpose statement that defines what it is our goal is, and that we say, these are the types of uses that fit into that character of that neighborhood. So, it really is this kind of exercise, but we also understand and have to balance, and I think when I say us, it's kind of the broader us, because you all, you know, approve legislation, is, does this fit, you know, the balance, does it work? Because we often hear from a community planning perspective, you know, neighborhoods all the time, I wish I had this service, I wish I had, you know, this service, our community doesn't have all these things. Well, in order to have these things, they exist in the zoning code. So, that's where we have to kind of figure out that balance.
Thank you. And just reminding the committee, we, we're, we have 20 minutes for our four o'clock time allotment.
Did you want me to?
Councilman Conway, you have any more questions?
I'll follow up online, offline, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so.
That's, go ahead, move on.
Okay, so, we're gonna, we're walking through our amendment to outdoor dining. So, we're on pedestrian and parking access. So, right now, what we're proposing, and number one, it says, "Outdoor dining may not interfere with pedestrian access in, or parking." So, I know this statement alone caused a lot of angst for people, but what we're proposing to do is change it and say, "Outdoor dining may not interfere with pedestrian access, parking, and safe vehicle maneuverability." And then, the second one, we keep, "All outdoor dining areas located in a public right of way must maintain a five-foot sidewalk clearance at all times." And then, we're adding in a number three, that says, "If reallocating parking spaces for outdoor dining, then the following apply." So, this is the piece that I think most people are really kind of honing in on is, is we have, did you want to?
Liam with DOT.
I would like to hear this part first, and then I, I can.
Okay, so, this is the piece that gets to the reallocation of parking spaces, and this is for us pertaining to those on a specific site, but we do speak to the right of way. So, the first part is off-street parking spaces are being, and I have a typo, and they're reallocating, should be reallocated, and result in the loss of required, required is important, parking. Then, a parking variance must be obtained from BMZA. That's no different if you're not providing required parking, then, you know, you go through the process for the variance. Second piece, "If on-street parking spaces are being reallocated, then the applicant must follow the process and guidelines set forth by the Department of Transportation." We kept this language pretty broad on purpose, because what this does by keeping it broad is, one, it points it to the Department of Transportation, but it gives them the flexibility to create their policy guidelines and programmatic guidelines as they need and as they see fit.
Okay.
And that sounds great. We're actually actively working with the law department, running our latest draft through, so we're, we're literally weeks away from, you know, briefing the administration on our proposed outdoor dining policy.
Okay.
And it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be stronger than the emergency program, but I think this added language, number three, specifically for on-street parking, we can live with at DOT, so thank you, Ms. Woods.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Um, Councilwoman Ramos.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Was there any consideration about the, well, I'll just say, I have one area in my district that is not a huge fan of this, and so, I'm wondering if there's a, uh, that doesn't, maybe it's in your policy coming up, but I don't know if we need to put in here, making it like a conditional use or something, so that there's actually some public input about it, or just leave it like this and then have?
Which part, conditional, the part that's on the real property?
On-street, the off-street parking part.
The off-street parking part. So, right now.
I'm not saying to take it out, I'm just wondering about the public input process.
I think.
Can always go to the BMZA.
Uh, Liam?
Yeah, for, for off-street, I guess I defer to planning and our reps from HCD. I will say that, that the policy that we're working on has to follow APA standards, so it will be posted for 30-day public comment before it's.
No, no, that, and I understand that. What I'm asking for is, let's say, somebody looks at this and says, "Great, I want to have a parklet on my commercials, right in front of my restaurant."
Yeah.
Okay? Um, and the question is, can they ju, you know, I guess the policy would be they have to apply.
Yes.
And then, there's public input? Or they, what the councilman was telling me, that maybe then they could appeal to the BMZA? I mean, I, I'm just asking this question because I think it's important to try to figure this out.
If, if there's, if we tack on like a conditional use requirement, you're going to see hundreds of these applications, because that's how many we, we have actively under the emergency program. So, I don't necessarily think that that's really necessary. As far as community input, I can follow up with our team and give you an update on that. I feel fairly confident in our ability to do this without really upsetting communities, because the emergency program, you know, we've had some complaints, but overall, I think it has worked out fairly well. And the whole point of creating the permanent program is to create stronger regulations on it.
So, you want to follow up with the councilwoman, because we don't want to get off track?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I just wanted to clarify, did you say your concern is for off-street or on-street?
Off-street.
Off-street, so.
I meant, I'm sorry, I'm totally getting myself confused, I'm sorry about this. On-street parking, so like, I have, yeah, it's my fault, my fault. I'm thinking on-street, so like your regular public parking spaces.
Right, okay.
Right, that are out there for everybody to use, then all of a sudden, a parklet comes in, and I'm actually a fan of parklets, I'm just asking this question. You know, what is the, I guess, the, we'll hear from the process, you know, from DOT at a later time, that, you know, what the public input part of that is, because they're basically taking public spaces.
And I, I definitely would say have that conversation, because the, the notion of having it a conditional use speaks to the zoning code, which the authority of BMZA, as far as I know, does not extend to on-street parking, so it would not be a conditional use the way that you and I know it. You'd have to figure out a different public process.
I mean, we could even put something in the policy that says contingent on city council sponsorship or something like that. I mean, we, it's, we're drafting it in real time.
Yeah.
We should talk about it.
We'll talk separately about that. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, we're moving to C, any outdoor dining located in the public right of way requires a minor privilege, not seeking to change that. The next piece is where we're seeking to change a little bit. So, required yard and rooftop dining, so we talked about the proposed addition of rooftop dining, so now, let's kind of regulate what that means. Outdoor dining in a nonresidential zoning district, so your C zones, your OICs, your IMUs, all of that, may not be located in any required yard or rooftop that joins a residential zoning district unless an alley or a street of at least 20 feet in width on the side in which the outdoor dining is proposed is located between the use and the residential district. Again, you know, I think there could be conversations to be had, but we were really conservative in, in adding the ability to do rooftop dining, and we know that the way our zoning code is written, that for the most part, is agnostic of building typology. So, a C1 property could be an attached building, or it could be a detached building. So, when you start to kind of, I'm not going to go into the weeds, but when you start analyzing nonresidential zoning district, you know that means that you could have a C-zone property next to somebody's house. And so, we're, you know, want to just acknowledge that. So, the second piece, "If no yard is required, or if no alley or street is present, as outlined in paragraph one of this subsection, the use must maintain at least a 30-foot distance from the property line of any adjacent non-mixed-use residential property." So, that, again, goes back to, you know, there's so many different ways that our parcels are set up in the city. Some places have alleys, some don't, some, you know, so it's really making room and, again, acknowledging that in some cases, there may be a potential problem if outdoor dining is, you know, you know, kind of cheek and jowl. So, that's where that proposal came from. And on page, the next page of our.
I just want to say, these discussions show how transformed Baltimore process took so many years. You know, this is just a small piece of what took like five to seven, seven, five years.
To get through. Oh, no, it's, it's 100% true. So, we're on E, compactness, "An outdoor dining area located on a public sidewalk adjoining the building's street frontage, seeking the use should be as compact as possible against the building wall to allow for easy connectivity to the sidewalk on the remainder of the block." So, this is basically getting at, we don't want you to have your seats hanging out in the pathway that people walk. This, it seems like a no-brainer, that nobody would do it, but people do it, and what this does, so earlier, when Katie Byrne was here, and I spoke about the ability, we look at it from the ability to do enforcement, this allows us to do enforcement. So, if you have a repeat offender that continuously blocks the sidewalk, then having this actually allows you to revisit them in a different way. So, F, conditional use applications and permitting, "When applying for the outdoor dining use, conditional use application, if required, and use permit, must be accompanied by a site plan that shows the extent and location of the proposed outdoor dining, including any required pedestrian access clearance and location reallocated parking space," and I have to have the word of in there, so it should say, "in location of reallocated parking spaces." So, this is really just kind of getting on the record, we need to see what you're proposing, but also, understanding with outdoor dining and the way our properties are set up, especially in our row house neighborhoods, a restaurant, you know, someone may have their seat, you don't want it in front of somebody's house, it has to stay with that business that has the permit, so, and they have to show it. So, that gives us the record in the permit. So, that's the extent for outdoor dining.
Madam Chair. Councilman Dorsey, question?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to request a reprinted version of section 14, 329, as it pertains to the bill. There are six amendments for 24 lines of text here, I'd like to see what that looks like in line.
Okay, we're not there yet, but we'll get there.
Well, I mean, just for, to be able to consider this more comprehensively.
Definitely.
A, an interlineated version.
We'll get a reprint with all of it.
Interlineated with the amendments.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Note, well taken, okay. Moving on.
Oh, do we, do we, this, for me, would be a good stopping point, because we're going to get into parking, I think. Or do you want to go past?
I do want to, where is that? One second. There was a, I think it's a good time to end with a letter that came in from the law offices of J. Carroll Holzer, PA, and basically, this is for the committee, and I'll just, it's not long, so I'll just read it. "In 2012, under transform, planning proposed a new mythology for determining allowable height with structures are not sighted close to the curb. The new term, the new methodology adopted by the city council as part of zoning code 15-301 expressly accommodates large properties that slope up or down from the street. The allowable height of the proposed building is measured from the average elevation of the ground between the wall and the curb. This topographic-based mythology satisfies the purpose of height limitations, which is to mitigate the impact of new." purpose of height limitations, which is to mitigate the impact of new structures and encourage compatible development, the current mythology seems reasonable and fair, a structure built on a high spot is allowed to be taller than its neighbors, but not excessively so as it could have been under the old code, a structure built on a low spot might have to be shorter relative to its neighbors, but not excessively so as it could have been under the old code, planning is proposing a return to the old code's measurement mythology, this is a significant change, it is not a clarification, and does not correct a problem in the code, reinstating the old method would advantage property owners with higher elevation sites, would disadvantage those with lower elevation sites, and would be inconsistent with the purpose of height limitations, the current mythology should be seen as an improvement over the old, and should not be abandoned, planning's presentation of the amendment to the Planning Commission on October seventh, twenty twenty-one betrayed a prejudice toward property owners who wish to build on sites with higher elevations, such as the property adjoining that of my clients Hunter and Margaret Cochran, uh, planning appeared to ignore the fact that the current mythology is more fair and equitable where land is sloped as it is in the Cochrans' North Baltimore neighborhood, please reject the amendment and preserve the existing fair mythology, and this is signed by J. Carroll Holster, and we'll have this as a matter of record that was given to us on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, so just wanted to read that into, um, our files, and I guess at this point, hmm, and, so, would you like to comment on that letter?
Sure, sure, and I'll, I'll keep it really brief, because we won't go over till, to the amendment till the next, you know, scheduled work session, session, because that's on fifteen three oh one, which is coming up, you know, pretty early in the next work session, um, but we, I'll just say right now that we stand by our amendment, um, the particular nature of this letter, I will actually want to have, I think, a consultation with our Law Department, because they're speaking to a property that, as far as I know, is an active court case, and so I don't want to speak out of turn,
Okay.
for something that I may or may not know about.
Understood, um, Hillary, would you like to comment briefly?
Sure, I would just simply indicate that regardless of any court challenge, this is the legislative policy changes that you all are empowered to make, so if you decide to change how things are measured, that's within your purview, while it may favor some people and not others, that's the entire nature of a zoning code, you're trying, at least prospectively, to affect how people use their property within the powers you're given, so this, you know, would be no different, and obviously, even though this is, you know, labeled a corrective bill, the, the term isn't errors being corrected, but instead, the process of continually refining the text, so there's no different notice, amendment, or anything that needed to happen in order to introduce this change, or any of the many others in this bill, so, um, you know, certainly the council's free to do whatever it needs to do.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, any, any further questions or comments, and so we're going to go in recess, and the mayor will probably, um, announce, um, another hearing date, a couple hearing dates at the next, our next council meeting.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, this, we're now in recess, thank you all again for, uh, your patience, and as we continue to work on this zoning code.